Okay, we are live. We'll call this December 5th meeting of the Salina Planning Commission to order. Margie, can you confirm that we have met the Kansas Open Records Act posting?
I can confirm that the packet was posted and the required notice was provided.
Thank you. Dean, roll call?
Roll call. Roll. We have just two, and I think, Margie, you can confirm this, but Mr. Smith has decided that he has to resign and he's no longer on the commission.
Correct, I got the resignation from Mr. Smith today.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm not, I'm not going to call his name. Commissioner Alt, Commissioner Waters, Commissioner Farber.
Here.
Commissioner Ivy.
Here.
Commissioner Van Cover.
Here.
Commissioner Seidow.
Here.
Chair Mike Sell.
Here.
So, we have four members present, two absent, and we have Mr. Farber joining us via Zoom, and five is a quorum, and with Mr. Smith's resignation, that puts us at four as a quorum. So, we have met our quorum obligation and we can conduct today's business.
If anybody's out there watching, considering serving on the planning commission, send in that, or expression of interest for them. We'd like to hear from you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes or any changes to the minutes from the November 21st, 2023 meeting?
I move we approve the minutes from the November 21st, 23 meeting.
Second?
I second that.
Movement second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And that was an affirmative from Commissioner Farber as well. So, we're 5-0 on the minutes. New business, Dean?
We have a number of public hearing items for you this afternoon, and four of them relate to a single property, and sometimes we do this where we go all the way through all the items and then have deliberation and recommendations, but I think in this case, we're going to go through these one by one and have you consider them one at a time because they're kind of sequential. They all fit together that way. So, the first, all of these property applications deal with a 41-acre tract of land that is out at the southwest corner of I-135 and Magnolia Road, just to the west of the Menards store there. And the first item, if, Dustin, if you could put up the existing future land use map. One of the things that's been an item, was an item of discussion for this area, which planning staff refers to as the donut hole because it's surrounded by the city on all four sides, but is basically hollow in the middle. And in the different comprehensive plans, both the planning and city commission have kind of, it's just been a little bit of a puzzle and discussion, trying to anticipate or encourage what the correct future land use or vision is for this area. And we have the current condition of Magnolia Road, that's not up to a good city standard like other major streets that we have in the community, so that's been kind of an impediment to zoning. We had a complete lack of utilities in the donut hole, and that was remedied in 2010 with a project that was put in to assist development of the Menards project. But the current plan for the area is that we would have commercial building off of Menards and extending all the way over to Dry Creek, and so the comprehensive plan shows that as future commercial. We have a development group that is interested in developing that as a site for multifamily housing and not commercial, and so they have filed an application to amend the future land use map to change the classification of future vision from commercial to multifamily residential on, or urban residential on that portion that's west of Virginia Drive. And we've provided you with some information. It just shows how things move fast and change, but when we wrote this staff report, the applicant had a contract to purchase this property, and now the applicant is the owner of the property. So, I would, I would correct that item that was in the packet. So, it is the owner of this property that is applying for this map change, and instead of commercial development, they're proposing to construct multifamily apartments on the site, and they're proposing 250 apartment units in Phase 1 of their development, and they're looking at constructing other forms of housing in the future on the remainder of the tract. So, they have filed this application asking that the land use designation be changed from commercial to urban residential to better align with their application. They've submitted to rezone the property to R3 multifamily residential, and in their belief to reflect that there's a greater community need for housing than for commercial development. And so, on page four and five of the report, the applicant has provided their reasons or justifications for making this housing instead of commercial. And one of the things they point to is number of new jobs anticipated in various employers in the community, and this also goes along with a well-documented shortage of multifamily housing. So, their land use map request, their zoning request is in response to that identified need. And so, this application has been filed with their belief that the public need is best served by amending the land use map and having the appropriate zoning for this property for multifamily housing. And so, just a couple comments that staff had. This amendment, we believe, is justified by changing conditions we have in the list, apartments as a land use that would fit in a commercial classification, but urban residential does, and we have seen a diminished need for commercial development land in the city. And so, if this request were approved, it would allow the property owner to serve the housing needs of the public by allowing them to develop this with various forms of multifamily housing. And so, your role in this case is to look at this area, decide what you think the future vision is for the south side of Magnolia Road, west of the interstate. Is it additional commercial development, or should this area fill in with housing development that is in proximity to K-State Salina campus and the airport employment area? So, on page six of your report, we have identified some alternatives. One would be to look at this and say, stand pat, and we still think this is best suited for commercial land use and expansion. You could show, amend the map to show the entire 41 acres as future urban residential. You could recommend amending the map to show the southern portion of this property as urban residential, but retain the commercial designation along Magnolia. Or you could recommend that only the land use designation be changed on the 11.2 acres that they're planning to do in Phase 1. We think that because the identified need for additional rental housing, the scarcity of sites available for construction of apartments, that this site is more suitable for multifamily housing than commercial expansion, and we think a change that's being requested is justified. Our recommendation would be to approve Alternative 3, which is depicted on the map attached to this report and is on the screen. So, this is American Ag credit here, there's commercial, or there's frontage here. We don't anticipate seeing the residential come out into this area here, and so it seems the more likely scenario is something of a commercial nature is going to be along the improved arterial here and then the housing in behind. So, the map that Mr. Hirsch had up there that maintains commercial along Magnolia is the recommendation that we have and is reflected in Alternative Number 3. So, with that, I'd be open to any questions you have about future land use.
Any questions of staff from the commissioners? Commissioner Farber?
No questions here, and I would concur that we are in need of residential housing, so I think this is a good idea. And I like how staff retained the, along Magnolia as commercial as well. I think that's going to be best suited.
I agree, I think it's well thought out. Dean, can you tell me what's happened with the, the piece of ground to the east of Fair Figgledian there that we approved for some housing?
So, what, what happened with that, and I'm not sure we reported back to you in detail, but there was a real estate committee that Menards has, and because of what's known as reciprocal easement agreements, just for the benefit of your information, a lot of times when you have a center like where Lowe's is or where Kohl's is, the developer will record a set of what's called reciprocal easement agreements, and in many cases, those give the primary anchor the ability to veto future uses that they don't want there. So, regardless of what zoning, regardless of what the city may do, so what happened was the apartment developer went to Menards Real Estate Committee, got support for that, you approved a conditional use permit. It turned out that Menards had a second layer of real estate committee that, no, which essentially was the owner, and they did not support the construction of multifamily housing there. So, basically, the conditional use permit expired and the project expired and did not move forward. So, that, that property's still owned by the same original developer, but we've not seen any movement either on Menards' part or on anybody else's part to do something there.
So, Dean, could you go ahead? This seems like a good time to bring this up. We have a letter at our places here, and I don't know if Commissioner Farber had access to this letter or not. But I can certainly read that. Chad, have you seen this letter from Menards?
I have not seen that, Mr. Chairman. I would appreciate if you would take the time to read that.
I'll go ahead and read it. It says, "Dear members of the Salina City Planning Commission, Menards, Inc., is in receipt of a public notice regarding the proposed redevelopment and annexation of approximately 40.37 acres with 11.2 acres to be used to construct 250-unit multifamily apartment complex. Menards currently operates a retail store and lumberyard adjacent to the proposed development. Where Menards shares in desire for growth, prosperity, and continued development of the city of Salina, the operation of Menards' property, like similar retail, large retail establishments, generates certain levels of noise, traffic, and light. Menards respectfully requests that the proposal before the commission be considered with these pre-existing conditions in mind. Menards further requests that any approval be conditioned on the acknowledgement by all parties of the foreseeable issues that may result by being in close proximity to an existing retail and lumberyard. Please include this letter as part of your official public hearing, transcripts of the upcoming City of Salina Planning Commission meeting. Thank you for your time and consideration. Patrick Schaefer, Corporate Counsel for Menards."
Thank you, Chair.
So, I would describe this as something that would be similar to what I would describe as a coming-to-the-airport letter. We often read articles or cases about developers who develop subdivisions next to an airport that's been there for 50 years, and then complaints are received from residents of the subdivision about the noise coming from flights taking off and landing, and it's like, didn't you take notice that the airport was there when you bought your house? So, I don't think this requires any action or formal acknowledgement on anybody's part. It's just basically saying, we're here, we were here first, we have certain noise and lights and truck deliveries, and we just want everybody to take notice that this is an existence, so we wouldn't want to have or expect to have complaints from residents about noise or lights or anything that would restrict Menards' operations in the future. But I don't, all we're going to do is put this letter on file and say, we've, you've been notified of this, they're not objecting to the project, they're just basically saying, we're not going to put any condition on the project for some acknowledgement, they're just putting everybody on notice that says, you should recognize that you're building or would be building apartments next to a pre-existing business, so you just need to live with how we are conducting our business.
We've heard from staff, would the applicant or the applicant's representative like to address the commission? And this is in regards to the addition to the comprehensive plan or change?
My name is Chip Corcoran, I'm a civil engineer, I'm with Renaissance Infrastructure Consulting, 8653 Penrose Lane, Lenexa, Kansas, and I'm representing the applicant today on all the relevant cases, and read the staff report, and certainly heard the letter from Menards, and I'm certain that the applicant's very aware that Menards is there and has considered that relative to, to the development plan that's being proposed. So, no additional comments, but would stand for any questions that you might have.
Any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Farber, any questions of the applicant?
He's shaking his head no.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to address this app, or change to the comprehensive plan? Okay. And do we have anyone online, Dustin, other than Commissioner Farber?
We do have a few people online, and I'll let them speak if they have anything they'd like to share or ask.
And again, you would be commenting on the-
No comments.
Just on the change in the, on the comprehensive plan.
So, again, the alternatives that we've provided for you are on page six there of your report, and option one's maintain the status quo, option two is make everything future urban residential, option three, which we're recommending, is taking the southern portion but retaining the commercial designation along the Magnolia frontage, and number four would limit the land use change to just the 11 acres they're planning to develop in Phase 1, and we think that would be short-sighted.
Bring it back to the commission for discussion and action.
On recommendation number three, is there anything that defines how much of the northern edge is commercial, or is it just based off the map that's-
Well, basically, the boundary would line up with the south boundary of American Ag credit. So, if you could go back to that map, Dustin, and-
So, would that be, need to be part of the motion, or?
Well, what we, what we were suggesting in the motion is just to make reference to the attached map.
Okay.
As depicted on the attached map.
So, that shaded area. Sorry, was that a motion?
It can be.
Okay.
I move that we recommend the future land use map in the Salina comprehensive plan be amended to show the southern portion of this 41.92-acre tract as urban residential, but retain the commercial land use designated along Magnolia Road, frontage west of American Ag credit.
And is there a second?
Second.
I'm moving to second to approve option number three on application M23-13. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And Commissioner Farber's recorded as an aye. All is opposed, none being heard, motion carries.
Okay. So, now you've cast your vision for how you want to see the next phase of the, what I refer to as the donut hole, develop, and the next item is item 3.1B, and that is a request to take this 41.92 acres that's currently not within the city limits and to annex it into the city. So, I think, again, what we'd make note of, at the time we wrote the report, the owner or the prospective owner had a contract to purchase this, they are now the owner, so Salina Destination Development, Inc., is now this owner. But as we noted, this is in the northwest corner of a larger area that, that's south of Magnolia that we refer to as, as the donut hole, because if you look at the bigger picture, it's bordered on the city on all four sides. In this particular case, the property that's proposed to be annexed is contiguous with the city on the east, next to the Magnolia Commons, and on the north, next to the Premier Edition. And so, in 2008, the very corner piece next to the interstate was purchased by Magnolia Development Partners, and they expressed interest in developing this site with retail stores, restaurants, lumberyard, home improvement center, and the primary anchor was to be Menards. And so, once there was a request for zoning and for annexation and plating, those were acted on by the planning commission, recommendations were made, but those recommendations were all contingent on one thing, and that was the fact that the donut hole was completely hollow when it came to public utilities. And so, following the action taken by the planning commission, staff spent considerable amount of time and effort trying to finalize design and financing plans for extending public utilities into this area and acquiring the needed off-site easements. And so, during that period, there was design, there were cost estimates. Mr. Nelson, who's here on behalf of the engineering department, was actively involved in developing cost estimates and a feasibility study for that, and so among those improvements is a waterline loop that started at Centennial Road, goes east, comes down Virginia Drive, ties back south, and then goes back west and ties back into Centennial, so that there's a, a complete loop. Then there's a water line, or excuse me, a sewer line that runs straight south, connecting to an interceptor sewer line. And then, we had the street improvements, Virginia Drive, and then a large detention pond area that's right up next to the interstate. And so, those were put together, the city commission approved a benefit district for those improvements on April 26, 2010. They were all installed upon approval of those plans, then the ordinances annexing and rezoning, the Magnolia Commons property occurred in 2010. So, now we move forward with a request for annexation on property that is now already served by water and sewer and has public street access from Virginia Drive. And so, the annexation request area is bordered by American Ag credit on the north, the Menards property on the west, there's a property that's also owned by Comco, Inc., that's directly south of Menards, there's property owned by Larry Care that is in the southern portion, and then there is Dry Creek, which forms the west boundary of the request area. So, just something we wanted to point out is, under state assessment law, when you have property that's in the county and it benefits from utilities, as long as it's in the county and not developed, those assessments are deferred, but there are benefit fees that were assessed to this property, and we've identified those on page three of the report, the benefit fee for the 12-inch waterline loop and the benefit fee for the sewer that was installed, and there was also a benefit fee for the construction of Virginia Drive. So, all those benefit fees would be recouped as part of this development. And so, we have west Dry Creek available as a discharge point for stormwater runoff, but there may be a need for detention and dedication of easements to address that detention. This property's already being served in the vicinity by the city Salina Fire Department and Police Department, so it's not a stretch to the service area, this area's already being served. It's not anticipated that the property west of Dry Creek or immediately south of Menards will be annexed or developed anytime in the near future, but as this development takes shape, that those areas may become more attractive. And so, in terms of detriment or cost to the city, we're already maintaining all those public water lines and sewer lines and are maintaining the street, so there's no additional maintenance costs. And potential benefits to the city include collection of property tax, sales tax, franchise tax, and recoupment of the benefit fees, and this project is directly supportive of the housing needs that have been identified in our most recent housing study. So, you have, as your previous motion decided that you think the vision for this area is urban residential, not commercial, and so, your choices on this matter would be to recommend that this entire tract of land be annexed into the city to allow it to connect to city water and sewer. You could postpone making a recommendation if you think you need additional information, or you could recommend that this property not be annexed into the city at this time. Our recommendation is to point out that this is already bordered by the city on two sides, it's already served by investment in city utilities, and we would recommend that the applicant's petition for voluntary annexation be approved. I didn't catch to see, Dustin, whether you had put up the map that showed the benefit area from 2010, but just wanted, before we took questions, the red box, that is the outline of the area, that all the properties that benefited from the infrastructure improvements in 2010, and so you can see that this is the parcel right here that was included in that benefit district, and you see that the different parcel numbers there based on the location and size of the parcel, each of those parcels got a separate assessment for water, sewer, and street. But the yellow area was the area that was within the city at the time, and since that time, down in this corner, the Aeroplanes subdivision has been annexed into the city. So, with that, I'd be open to any questions you have about bringing this property into the city limits.
Questions of staff? Commissioner Farber, any questions of staff?
Yes, this petition is inclusive of the commercial property next to American Ag and the urban residential property, is that correct?
That is correct. The annexation area goes all the way to and includes Magnolia Road, and so it's, it's the full area going to the center line of Magnolia Road.
Thank you.
Any other questions, staff? Okay, would the applicant care to address the commission on this one? Any? If, if, unless you have something specific, you're okay with the annexation, non-forced annexation in the city? And Commissioner Farber, do you have any commission, or questions for the applicant?
He's shaking his head no.
Okay. And do we have anyone from the audience that would like to comment on this annexation? Appears none, and...
Do we not have anyone on Zoom who wants to comment?
Okay, very good. We'll bring it back to the commission for action and discussion.
I make a motion to approve A23-5.
And...
Please.
Yep, with the staff recommendation there, okay. And a, and a second, that was Commissioner Farber that seconded that, I believe? Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve application A23-5 for annexation of this property into the city. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? None being heard, and also a, an affirmative vote for Commissioner Farber. All right.
That moves us to item 3.1C, and this is a request that deals with the zoning classification of the property, and so to summarize, in item, subitem A, you recommended that the land use designation be changed, retaining the commercial on the frontage, and you recommended annexing the entire 41.92 acres into the city, including the Magnolia frontage. What the developers are proposing as Phase 1 at this time, their rezoning request is for less than the full 41 acres, it's for an 11-acre site identified as Lot 1, and so their request is to rezone what's identified as Lot 1, 11.2 acres from Celine County Agricultural to R3 Residential, and Mr. Aiken is going to give you a report about the zoning request.
Good afternoon, Mr. Commissioners. So Dean gave a good amount of background, so I won't do that. KZ2310 is a request to change the zoning of an 11.2 acre parcel of land from Celine County Ag to R3 to construct 250 multifamily apartment units. So, the subject 11.2 acre property is currently zoned Celine County Ag, which does not allow for multifamily residential apartments. Staff determined that in order to permit this multifamily housing complex, the applicant would first need to rezone the property to an appropriate zoning district that could accommodate multifamily housing. In addition to filing a complimentary annexation application, future land use map amendment application, and a plat application. So, the R3 zoning district, which the developers are proposing to rezone to, is designed to provide multifamily development at a minimum of 1,008, or square feet per dwelling unit, with the provision that no single lot may be less than 6,000 square feet in area. So, we've reviewed the proposed conceptual site plan in accordance to the city's R3 zoning standards, and I will, I'll run through those considerations here. So in terms of a required front yard setback, they're required to provide at least 25 feet, and the conceptual site plan shows that the proposed Virginia Drive front yard setback would be 27 feet, while the Magnolia Road one would be 374 feet. In terms of side yard setbacks, they need seven and a half feet on each side, and it looks like they're proposing 101 feet on the north side and 150 feet on the south side. The rear yard here is not applicable because it's a corner lot with two front yards and two side yards. The minimum lot width is 50 feet, and it looks like they are proposing about 840. The minimum lot depth is 100, and they have approximately 1,070. Minimum lot area is 1,000 square feet per dwelling unit, but not less than 6,000 square feet, and they're proposing 1,951.5 square feet per unit, or 22.32 units per acre. Their max allowed coverage is 40%, and they're proposing about 20.24%, so they're under that. For height, we don't know that yet, we're, we haven't gotten elevations, but that's something that we'll review at the building permits of middle stage. Parking, they're required to provide two parking spaces for the first 20 units, and then after that, one and a half spaces per dwelling unit. So for 250 units, they would need to provide 385 spaces, and their site plan shows that they're proposing 393, so they exceed that requirement. Landscaping and screening, so multifamily dwellings in the R3 district are subject to the city's landscape regulations, which entails front yard landscaping requirements and buffer requirements. So, with 100, or excuse me, with 1,070 feet of frontage on Virginia Drive, that equates to a total required front yard landscaping area of 21,400 square feet. And then also, because there's more than six open parking spaces, a parking lot screening of a minimum height of three feet must be implemented between the proposed parking stalls and that Virginia Drive front property line. So, conformance with the city's front yard landscaping requirements is also something that's determined upon building permits of middle, as well as signage, which we don't have yet, but they're allowed a maximum sign size, or excuse me, they're allowed up to three signs. And so next, I'll go over staff's review of the rezoning request, where their review criteria can be seen in your packet under Attachment Number 2, which just further details the review criteria. In terms of suitability of the site for development, that factor deals with suitability of the property for development under existing Celine County Ag zoning and the extent to which the current zoning inhibits development. So neither the current owner nor the prospective owner wish to develop the property under Celine County Ag permitted or conditional uses, which doesn't include multifamily residential apartments. So from a land use utilization and zoning standpoint, the current prospective owners believe the site would be most appropriate for multifamily apartments in the city's R3 zone. The site has available utilities and it's out of the floodplain, so staff would agree that the physical attributes of the property and the availability of public utilities make it suitable for residential multifamily development. And also, the proposed density is consistent with some housing areas to the south of this development. Terms of the character of the neighborhood, that deals with whether the requested zoning would be compatible with zoning and uses of the nearby property. So West Magnolia Road, west of the I-135, predominantly consists of undeveloped agricultural land and the Salina Regional Airport at the west edge of the city. The area east of this property largely consists of commercial uses on the east and west sides of the I-135, with a variety of retail uses. North of the subject property, it's mostly undeveloped agricultural land and a mix of residential uses north of the I-135, and then south of the subject property, it's largely undeveloped agricultural land and multifamily residential housing. So although there is little R3 zoning in the vicinity, staff believes that the site meets the locational criteria for multifamily residential housing because it has frontage on an arterial street, the subject property has access to existing utilities that could support the development, and the proposed site plan meets R3 requirements. Public utilities and services, I can save you reading all that, and I will just say, adequate water, sanitary sewer, gas, and electrical lines do appear to be in place already to serve this development, so a change in zoning classification wouldn't result in any additional burden on public facilities and services. Terms of street and traffic, a traffic study was conducted by Renaissance Infrastructure Consulting, who's here today. The study showed that an average of 1,678 vehicles are expected to access this property at a full build scenario daily, where the majority of trips, about 40%, 40% are expected to arrive from the I-135 to the north. There is little vehicular traffic in this area, shown by the KDOT traffic count map of the city of Salina and the traffic study produced by Renaissance Infrastructure Consulting. This area has comparatively little traffic to some other parts of the city, so an estimated increase of 1,678 vehicles a day is not going to lead to dramatic increases in local traffic congestion. Conformance with the comprehensive plan, you all just approved the urban residential land use change, so staff does believe the site is congruent with that land use category as well as the comprehensive plan. So with that, staff has created the following findings in support of this rezoning application. First, the proposed site plan shows that this development would conform to the city's R3 zoning requirements, and then things like height, landscaping, and signage would be reviewed at the time of building permits of middle, and staff would obviously ensure that conformance is, is all there with everything. The physical attributes of the property and the availability of existing public utilities, which are already installed, makes the property suitable for residential multifamily development, and also the proposed density is consistent with housing to the south. Although connectivity is currently lacking, this proposed apartment site is located in proximity to the K-State Salina campus and the airport employment area. The site meets the locational criteria for multifamily housing because it has frontage on an arterial street, it has, once again, access to existing utilities, and it meets R3 requirements. The traffic studies show that with the additional 250 units being proposed, that would only result in about 1,678 vehicle trips per day, and because this area comparatively has little vehicular traffic, the proposed development won't lead to traffic chaos. So with that, it looks like the Planning Commission has the following alternatives here. They could recommend approval of this request, they could recommend consideration be postponed for additional information from either staff or the applicant, or they could recommend denial if the appropriate findings can be made. So staff would recommend approval of the applicant's rezoning request based on staff's suggested findings on page 10. So, that concludes that part, so.
Got any questions? Please let us know.
We did add that note at the bottom to say that you're not, no one's voting on, you can certainly discuss and make comments on the conceptual site plan, but we're not voting to approve their site plan this evening. It is conceptual and for illustrative purposes to see what the zoning would lead to. This is strictly on the annexation. And this would give them, this item would give them the necessary zoning they need to build the number of units they're proposing.
Yep. Okay, questions of Mr. Aiken regarding this rezoning? Commissioner Farber?
No question.
Thank you. All right, would the applicant have anything to say on this rezoning? The, the person representing the traffic study, would, is that you as well?
Yes.
Okay, I just found that really interesting, I, when I was reading through that, I, I'm not a number cruncher by any imagination, but...
In regard to just the...
Yeah.
Existing traffic versus the additional traffic?
Yeah, well, and then how that stuff is, is compiled, in other words, like, I can't remember exactly what it was, but there was more trips out than there was in or something at a certain time of day, and, and, you know, it took me a while to get my head around all that stuff, but I'm glad that we looked...
Background documentation that those studies draw from in terms of different types of uses and what their demand is, both in and out on a, on a transportation facility, and then that's coupled with actual data from, you know, both traffic counts and, and, you know, the counts provided by KDOT and so forth at adjacent intersections.
This, this commission has been rather interested in that, and not on this particular site, but on other sites at times, and it was nice to see that background information there on the traffic study, so.
I'd have to thank your staff, they, they recommended that we proceed that study as part of the application, and obviously it provided you the information that you might need to make your decision, so that's great.
Thank you. Commissioner Farber, any questions from the applicant?
No questions, thank you.
Anyone from the staff, I mean, up front, anyone from the audience care to comment on this zoning request? And do we have anybody online, Dustin?
We do not appear to have anyone online with any questions.
Okay, I guess we'll bring it back to the staff for, I mean, back to the commission for discussion and action. Mr. Chairman, I...
Mr. Chair, I would, we recommend to the City Commission that we've got a request be approved based on the factors found on page 10 by staff.
Attachment 2.
And it, was that a second?
Oh, I thought he was looking for the recommendations, those were attachment 2, I believe.
Yeah, and, and that was considering all the, the factors in attachment 2 as well, is that correct, Commissioner Farber?
Right, I think staff laid them out pretty well on page 10.
They, they did, yep. Okay, we have a motion, and, and is that a second?
Yeah, a second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve application Z23-10, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard, motion carries, and a, and a yes from Commissioner Farber. All right, we moving on.
To develop a new housing project in the city of Salina, you need to be annexed into the city and be part of the city, that has been addressed. You need to have appropriate zoning for the development you're proposing, and then you need to have a platted building lot to build on, and so item 3.1D is consideration of a preliminary plat for Dry Creek subdivision or Dry Creek addition to the city of Salina. And just wanted to point out that the proposed layout is for the full 41.92 acres, but Lot 1 is a, the residential building lot that's being proposed and will be final platted, and the remainder that is on there is for essentially illustrative purposes to show the commission what the balance of the, the property looks like. And so, this is the, the final piece of the puzzle, and so the proposed housing development would be on proposed Lot 1. The 29-acre holding lot is just being set aside for future development. The proposed lot and building layout is shown on the preliminary plat drawing, and then access, as we indicated, to the apartment complex would be via Virginia Drive, and there's a traffic study analyzing, projective, traffic volumes on Virginia Drive was submitted, and the purpose of the traffic study was to determine whether there were any major street improvements or signalization or anything that would be required in response or to support this development. And so, although Salina Destination is proposing to annex this entire parcel, they're only proposing to rezone the 11.2 acres at this time, and the balance, the holding area will retain its agricultural zoning, and then when plans are formalized for that, that will come back for rezoning and, and final plating. And so, if you look at this property as a whole, it has 950 feet of frontage on Magnolia, but all of that is towards the western end, and a lot of that is adjacent to West Dry Creek. The Magnolia frontage will not be platted as part of Phase 1 development. The Phase 1 development area has 1,070 feet of frontage on Virginia Drive. Proposed Lot 1, which is what will be final platted, will have its direct perimeter street access from Virginia Drive. Virginia Drive was built to city street standards, but lacks the construction of a sidewalk on the west side. on the west side. And so our conclusion is that Virginia Drive meets the applicable public street standard, and we believe the subdivision design for Phase 1 conforms with the street requirements for new subdivisions. The question of improvements to Magnolia Road will be addressed when Phase 2 is final platted, since Phase 1 does not have frontage and is not introducing traffic directly onto Magnolia Road. So as we noted, the sole access into Phase 1 will be via Virginia Drive. No changes to the street network or street improvements are being proposed as part of this development. There's 1,070 feet of frontage on Virginia Drive, and the plan calls for three driveway connections into the apartment complex from Virginia Drive. There's no internal public street that's being proposed west of Virginia Drive. All the internal drives will be private. Because the proposed number of apartment units would exceed 200 dwelling units, the international fire code requires a second means of emergency access be provided into the development site, and so the applicant's design team is proposing an emergency access road in the northwest corner of the site that would connect to Magnolia Road. That road would extend outside the boundaries of Phase 1 and connect directly to Magnolia Road. This would provide a secondary means of access into the apartment complex in addition to Virginia Drive. So we have provided some drawings attached and a fire code analysis in regards to meeting the remoteness criteria. As additional development occurs in the western portion of the property and traffic volumes increase, the fire department believes that consideration should be given to converting that access easement to a public street. So that alignment there is temporary in interim, but it could be converted to a public street at a later time. And again, the purpose of showing Lot 2 here is just to, it's being acquired, and it's just to show you what the configuration and shape of the property is for future development. So we have access and frontage on a public street. The lot provides sufficient land area to have 250 dwelling units. It doesn't look like there would be any barriers or obstacles to obtaining building permit for Lot 1 once the required public infrastructure is in place to serve the buildings, and although there's floodplain along Dry Creek, none of it of the Phase 1 area is in the mapped floodway. So as we pointed out, this property has benefited from the public infrastructure that was constructed in support of the Menards Project, and so we have provided you with a summary of the water supply and fire protection, the sanitary sewer, and the Director of Utilities has reviewed and approved the proposed internal sewer line layout and the internal water line layout, and staff understanding that all those internal utility lines will be public and located within public utility easements. And so there is a requirement, anytime you're adding something to the public water system, those plans have to be approved by our Director of Utilities and by Kansas Department of Health and Environment. So in terms of stormwater management, the subdivision regulations require developers to detain the additional runoff that's caused by their development. In other words, looking at the difference between what comes off the property today and what comes off in its developed state. So the proposal is to construct a detention pond in this area. The pond would be eight feet in depth and would be constructed in that corner, and then stormwater runoff would be stored in the pond and discharged into West Dry Creek at a controlled rate through a storm pipeline. You have a memo from the city engineer in your packet in regard to drainage, and Mr. Nelson is here in person if you have questions about that. The emergency response to this property would be from Station 3 on Belmont, and this area is contiguous to areas that are already within the city limits and receive city police and fire protection. So as far as school enrollment areas, we're talking about Schilling Elementary School on Schilling Road, South Middle School, and Salina South High School. It's possible, but not definite, that children residing in this complex may need to be bused to Schilling Elementary School. That will be determined. And then the city does have a park service fee or park impact fee that is collected based on the number of dwelling units, and that is currently set at $100 per dwelling unit, although it can be reduced if you provide private recreation or open space for residents. And so we have electric lines and natural gas in place to serve this property. As you might well know, Magnolia Road does not meet city standards, but a project to upgrade Magnolia Road was in the capital improvement program that the planning commission recently reviewed, and Mr. Nelson may have some updates on possible other sources of funding for that. But as we noted, in order to determine whether Magnolia and Virginia Drive and their present configuration would provide adequate access to and from the development, a traffic study was prepared. It was determined that 1,673 additional vehicle trips would be generated on Virginia Drive. The conclusion was that the two-lane roadway has adequate capacity to carry the traffic, and that no geometric improvements to the intersection beyond what is there today are needed to accommodate this development, and no warrant was met for installing a traffic signal at Virginia and Magnolia. Again, we have a supporting memo from the engineering department agreeing with the conclusions of the applicant's engineer that no improvements to Virginia Drive or Magnolia Road are needed to support this development. As far as the, what will be final platted, there's no new street dedications. There'll be a number of internal dedications for utility lines within the plat, and then we just wanted to point out that there's three items that will need to be addressed by separate instrument, and since we're only final plating this area here, we would need a deed of dedication for the south half of Magnolia Road there. That would be done by a separate instrument. We have an emergency access easement that would come out from here and connect to Magnolia Road, and then the storm pipeline that drains the pond over to Dry Creek goes outside the boundaries of the plat, so there would need to be a separate drainage easement to allow stormwater to be carried from the detention pond across the unplatted piece to the creek. And so as far as what public improvements are needed for this project, for Virginia Drive, no improvements. The improvements to Magnolia and loop it back buildings and have fire hydrants, and so that is what would be needed to get started with Phase 1A. We've addressed the land use map. That plan has now been amended to support this. Just for your benefit, there's, for a long time, been a master plan that calls for Virginia Drive eventually to be extended south to connect to Virginia Drive in the Hollybrook Edition, so if you're familiar with Casey's and the motel there at the intersection of Virginia Drive and Schilling, that goes into the Hollybrook Edition and then long-term tying back. And so one of the reasons this is named Virginia Drive up here is to reinforce that it's an extension of this someday. And so that is the plan for future connectivity. And so on page nine, we have made some findings for your review and consideration of what we think those findings do in terms of supporting approval of this preliminary plat. And so the, we have, you think that the review criteria have been met by this application, and if all the policy and technical issues have been addressed, you're satisfaction, and you wish to approve the plat, we have lots of attachments. So we had an excerpt from the traffic study and the traffic study memo. We had excerpts of the drainage study and a draining study memo. We had a concept plan for emergency access. We had a phasing plan and an overall utility plan. So in terms of questions about the traffic study or draining study, we have Mr. Wayne Nelson here from the engineering department for questions related to that, and we have, still have Mr. ... okay, he's hiding, but we have Joe Cavasic, the fire marshal, here to address any fire access, emergency access questions, and then we have the planning staff for anything else that you have. But I would, anything that relates to fire protection, fire access, I would refer that to the fire marshal, and anything about drainage or traffic analysis, I would refer to Mr. So with that, planning staff is open for any questions you have, but we also have other staff here to address specific questions.
Any questions, staff? Commissioner Farber? Any questions of staff?
He's shaking his head no.
Okay. I have a question or two for Mr. Nelson, if possible. On the traffic study, it showed recommendation that the radii for the driveways be increased to 25 feet. Can you tell me why, and then also what are they right now?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I am not able to do that because I did not review the traffic study.
Oh.
So I don't know if Mr. Stack is online or city engineer, Dustin?
He does not appear to be with us online.
Yeah, okay. This isn't a deal breaker question, it was more of an information question.
Well, one of the things that we discussed, and we have Mr. Augustine here in the audience, but when we were looking at Mr. Augustine's plat on South Knight Street, one of the things we discussed was radii for driveways.
That's right.
And how one of the things you can do in lieu of making your driveway extra wide is that you can increase your radii so that it makes for a less severe turn. So although we regulate the width of the driveway, the width of the driveway is measured at the property line, and you can use the area between the property line and the street curb, and so what the engineer was recommending was to provide a more generous sweeping radii for those turning movements.
Okay.
And the other recommendation they had was to line up the north driveway with the driveway at Fairfield Inn across the street.
Very good.
But that reference to the radii is just to make it easier for the driver to have a more sweeping turn.
Very good.
Well, I see Mr. Stack is here now.
Okay. We'll get to him in just a minute. And do you have any information on additional funding for the Magnolia project?
Well, we did receive news last week that we had been awarded a cost share award from KDOT, and actually, we met this morning with our consulting engineer and staff and our consultant, and came up with a game plan as to when we can get things going with that. We hope to have field check plans done by April of 2024, followed with the office check plans in early fall, and then spring of, or earlier of 2025 to have final plans and hope to be able to set the bid dates at that point. The plans or the concepts at this point is to have a roundabout built at the intersection of Magnolia and Virginia Drive. That'll be part of the Phase 1 improvements. I have to defer to Mr. Stack. I don't remember exactly how far west we're going with that. It's about 200 feet down or beyond.
Dan Stack, city engineer, just west of the Ag Credit property there, that's their west driveway, and actually, the development of Salina Destination will have an entrance on that, west of that area, so that'll get to pretty close to that area for this project for, it's kind of a Phase 1 Magnolia project. There's a bridge further west that'll take a little longer to design, and then a railroad crossing further west of there, so it's kind of a phased approach. Hopefully, that the city can coordinate with the railroad. Yep, thank you. There's the bridge, and then there's the railroad crossing, so coordinating with the different entities as well as funding categories. We got enough money to fund Phase 1, and hopefully, as time goes, we'll get enough money to fund the rest of it.
Sure. And you've seen the traffic study, and you're okay with the numbers in there?
Yeah.
Don't consider any of that a problem?
No, I think, sorry, my phone was cutting out with the, watching it upstairs, so I thought I'd come down if there was a question, then it cut out about the time you asked that question. So was your question about 25-foot radiuses, is that right?
Well, that was a radius to the entrances off of Virginia Drive, but, and I presume that's just to let traffic go a little faster around those corners.
That, and, I mean, I guess more or less it's so that you don't have, you know, cut the corner, you know, if you have a truck, a delivery vehicle, a lot of times those are, 25-foot radiuses are really nice. That's a normal radii for an intersection, a local intersection in town. A lot of times our residential driveways and commercial driveways don't get them quite that big, and then you see what happens is they cut off, they run off the edge of the road, or it's not wide enough for a car and a vehicle to turn in, so 25-foot radius is a really good radius to have whatever they need to, delivery trucks, you know, big, even not, not semi 18-wheelers, but it's a good-sized radius for decent-sized vehicles to get in that subdivision.
And the 1,500 cars a day, or whatever that number was, that you don't consider that any kind of impact on the, on that Virginia Drive traffic?
No, Virginia is kind of set up to be the collector in that area, so that's a fairly common number for a collector in our city. I'm trying to think of some of the different collectors we have, the Neils, the Fardells, the Quincy's, they're all around 2,000 maybe. Fardell's a little less, but 2,000, 2,500 for Roach, those kind of, those are the kind of streets that take that traffic pretty regularly, so we're not quite there yet even with this first phase of this development.
Very good.
And will Magnolia Phase 1 be done before the apartment is renting apartments?
It's a good question. We talked about that today with our meeting, with our...
Yes, we did.
...consultant, and we're hoping to start building it in 2025. That's about as real as we could probably get our portion started, so we feel like that'll be, I don't know how fast Destination's planning on, you know, it'd be close, yeah. And the plan that we talked about today is that they'll probably build that west entrance to their area first, or at some point, they'll need that west entrance to help alleviate the congestion at Virginia while we're building it, so they'll at least have access and there'll be good construction traffic access. We don't want to mess that up for them, as well as, we'll have to keep access for Menards anyway, so we'll have to figure something out. It's just, if we can split that in half, that would be huge, so the hope is they can build that west entrance for them. So I don't know if Chip's got any more to add to that, but that would be our hope anyway.
I'd just add that, you know, timing-wise, I think Salina Destination Development would like to begin work immediately, so we're going to follow with a final plat and likely a land disturbance application, and then a full building permit application, so I expect construction to begin in Q1 2024.
Wow, nice. Any questions of applicant or city engineers?
Just...
Commissioner Farber, any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, yes.
I just want to add that the improvements to Magnolia that we're proposing, along with the roundabout, will be to enclose the open ditch on the north side. That'll all be enclosed with a box covert.
Oh, okay.
And we'll be putting in a bicycle... And we'll be putting in a bicycle, hike and bike trail on the south side plus sidewalks. So
Great.
So some big improvements coming there.
Yeah, that sounds nice. Okay. And did Commissioner Farber have any other questions?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone in, in the audience care to comment on this application? And Dustin, do we have anyone online?
Would you know I have anyone online interested in commenting on this?
Okay. Well, we'll bring this final plat application back to the commission for discussion and action.
So again, on page 10 and 11, our recommendation is if you believe that all the policy and technical issues have been addressed to your satisfaction and you wish to approve this preliminary plat, we would recommend that approval be made subject to conditions one through seven that are identified on page 10 and 11 of your staff report. And if you don't think it's ready, you could postpone consideration to get additional information. Or if you don't think the criteria for a preliminary plat has been met, then a motion should be made to deny the preliminary plat citing what criteria you don't think has been met. Our review is they've, in our mind, have touched all the bases and addressed everything that we've asked from a staff standpoint. So we think it's ready for your consideration.
I entertain a motion.
I move that we approve application P23-7 with the following staff rec, with the staff recommendations notated on the report, one through seven.
Sir, second?
Thank you.
And moving to second to, to approve application P23-7. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
As a, as an oppose or as a, as a yes?
I, I approve as a yes.
Okay. Margie, you got that. You were way ahead of me. Okay, very good. And, and the applicant has seen those seven recommendations and is okay with that? Okay, very good. Motion carries. We are on to legislative matters.
Yeah, so a legislative matter we have for you this evening is a requested text amendment or amendment to our subdivision regulations. As the commission may be aware, when the planning commission deals primarily with two sections of the city code, one being Chapter 42, the zoning regulations, and the other being Chapter 36, which is our subdivision regulations that deal with the plating and development of property. And so, you know, except for possibly Mr. Mike Sell, although he was on at, at maybe an earlier interval than that. But one of the things that staff wrestled and struggled with in the second, in the period 2015 through 2016, was we had developers who were wanting to plat and develop property all the way to Holmes Road. And that plat would come before the planning commission. And there was just no good solution. There was nothing that was code based. There was nothing that was policy based that could address the case where you had a subdivision and the street that, on the perimeter of that subdivision that provided access to it was not suitably improved. And experience is that you have one subdivision, it generally can't bear the entire cost of improving that perimeter road. And so there was actually a moratorium that was put in place while that issue was steadied. There was a, a code amendment that came before the planning commission that addressed minimum frontage requirements, access requirements, improvement standards, and a fair share funding mechanism. That was presented, endorsed, but then modified to allow some additional modifications to be made. And so the planning commission recommended approval of that modified ordinance in August of 2016. It was approved by the city commission on August 27th. And the moratorium on plats was lifted and plats moved forward, including the Magnolia Hills Estates plat. And so that, that text amendment that was approved defined a number of terms, such as perimeter street, direct access perimeter street, that required new subdivisions to abut and have frontage on a direct access perimeter street. So in the case we just discussed with the apartment complex, Virginia Drive was the perimeter street that provided access to the proposed apartments. And then it also directs the planning commission to look at the need for additional emergency access points into the subdivision, which we did in the last case by looking at emergency access coming from Magnolia Road. And so those, those aspects are governed by Section 3674, which we have just excerpted for you in the code. And that, the part dealing with access is on page two. On page three, we start getting into the part that deals with what the developers improvement obligations are. And so in the case we just looked at, we had a direct access perimeter street. And that direct access perimeter street met the public street standard. And so at the time that you were considering that, which is today's meeting, we could report to you that that street was improved already to the applicable public street standard. When it's not, then it's up to the developer to improve that abutting street. But there is a provision there that says a subdivision plat may be approved if all direct access perimeter streets and connecting streets are or will be improved to an alternate street standard, not less than an interim street standard. So the application that has been filed for your consideration today, we've summarized it on your agenda and in the report, but it is a application filed by Jeff Mays requesting an amendment to Section 3674A3. And to allow the city commission to determine whether a public sidewalk must be installed or may be deferred through the approval of a development agreement in cases where an existing abutting street meets the interim street standard, except for the existence of a public sidewalk. So the reason that we highlighted or put in italics there the requirement that the, the street had to be in its current form or improved to an interim street standard is that the public sidewalk is a element of that definition. And so when Magnolia Hills Estates moved forward and it has 2,400 feet of frontage on Holmes Road, instead of a development agreement, there was a benefit district that was formed. And that benefit district had triggers for when Holmes Road had to be improved to an interim street standard. And as part of that interim street standard, it required that a sidewalk be constructed on the west side of the street. And so the cost estimate in the benefit district included that sidewalk. So just recently, in 2023, you reviewed three different subdivision plats that were non-residential. They were not residential subdivision. They were the ADR addition on North Ohio, the Bex addition on North Ohio, and the Augustine addition on South Ninth Street. And they had frontage on a direct access perimeter street that met the interim street standard as to pavement width and thickness, but lacked curb and gutter and lacked public sidewalks. In each case, you approved the final plats for those. The developers requested that their development be referred to the city commission for consideration of a development agreement that would allow the street improvements to be deferred to a future date. And all of those came before the city commission on October 2nd. And so what the effect of those development agreements that the city commission endorsed was to allow development of the ADR addition, the Bex addition, the Augustine addition to move forward with the street left in its current condition. No curb and gutter, pavement untouched, but required the addition of public sidewalks along North Ohio and South Ninth Street to be constructed as part of any building permit issued for those properties. So in the case of the Bex and the Augustine additions, the developers asked that their development agreements allow construction of the sidewalks to be deferred until those streets were upgraded. And staff's response was that the subdivision regulations, as they're currently drafted and adopted, don't give the commission the discretion to defer the sidewalks. And the reason for that is that in the very definition of interim street, which is attached to your report, having a sidewalk on one side of the perimeter street is part of the standard or definition for an interim street. And the subdivision plat may only be approved if the perimeter street is improved to not less than the interim street standard. And you have to have a sidewalk in order to meet that standard. Therefore, it's not optional. This application has been filed to amend that, to determine, to allow the city commission to determine on a case by case basis whether that sidewalk can be deferred as part of that development agreement. And that would be the case where, if you look at the roadway itself for Ohio or South Ninth, the roadway itself has paving and width that meets the interim street standard. It's the lack of sidewalk that prevents it from meeting that standard. So this presents a policy question for the city, the planning commission and the city commission, looking at future development as to whether public sidewalks should be required in every case where a subdivision is developed next to an arterial or collector street that is a rural type section with no curb and gutter. And so some examples, if you look around, Markley Road does not have curb and gutter, but it has a hike bike path on the east side that was constructed. The roadway has not been modified. On South Ohio, south of Schilling Road, abutting the Ryan addition, South Ohio does not meet the city street standard. It doesn't have curb and gutter, but there is a sidewalk on the east side of the street. So the reason this is for you this evening is, as currently written and adopted, the subdivision regulations don't give you or the city commission the authority to defer that public street or public sidewalk construction requirement. And the applicant is requesting that the subdivision regulations be amended to allow the city commission to defer the sidewalk construction requirement on a case by case basis. And so we have identified a number of options for your consideration of this request. One would be to look at the definition of interim street, which we have a section, subsection D bolded, which says to be, for an existing street to be an interim street, it has to have a sidewalk at least five feet of width on one side of the street. So you could go in and say, well, that should just be flat deleted and that you can have an interim street and make no mention of the sidewalk being part of that. That's not what the text amendment is asking for. You could recommend approval of an amendment as requested by the applicant that would give the city commission the authority to defer construction of that sidewalk. You could recommend approval of a text amendment that would allow the city commission the discretion to defer that requirement, but limit that option to non-residential subdivisions only. So the three that I mentioned this evening are non-residential, meaning you don't have residents that are living in the subdivision. You could just open discussion and consider alternatives to that text amendment that could be referred back for additional study or discussion. Or you could postpone consideration of this at today's meeting if you wanted to have us provide additional information that we haven't provided. Or you could recommend denial of the request. In that case, the current regulations and requirements would remain unchanged. So in your packet, we provided a def, the definition from the code for what constitutes an interim street. And so when we look at something like South Ninth Street, which abuts the Augustine addition, we look first to see if we have concrete or asphalt pavement that's at least 24 feet in width and at least has the required thickness. We look at the condition of the road, how it was built, and whether it has a projected useful life. We look at whether the roadway has a functional ditch or curb and gutter storm drainage. In most cases, it's a functional ditch. And then we look to see whether there is a concrete sidewalk in existence. And if not, then it has to be added to be an interim street. We've given you some examples, the Markley Road in South Ohio examples. And then we have gone through the analysis that we provided you in the case of the Bex addition and the Augustine addition. So I, just for the benefit of the commission, if we look at North Ohio Street and the development agreement that was put before the city commission, it refers to immediate improvements and deferred improvements. And that agreement, the immediate improvement is the construction of a five-foot sidewalk on the west side of North Ohio in conjunction with the building permit. It's that sidewalk that brings it to an interim standard. The deferred improvement is the installation of curb and gutter and storm drainage improvements. And that would be deferred until North Ohio reaches a traffic count of 10,000 vehicles a day. So I can't, and there's similar language that, or identical language in the case of the Augustine addition. So what I can't, I can't speak for the applicant per se, but our understanding of the application is what they would have preferred is that the sidewalk portion be included in the deferred street improvements. In other words, that the deferred improvement was the installation of curb and gutter, storm drainage, and a sidewalk, and not required as an immediate improvement. And so the subdivision regulations today do not give that discretion to the city commission. And the applicants would like to see them have that discretion. So that's, that's the best way I can characterize that. And the only, the only way to address that is either to change the definition of what constitutes an interim street or to modify the language that deals with what a development agreement can address. So with that, I know it's a fairly complicated issue. It has been for staff. But the, the point was that both those applicants wanted their development agreements to be able to defer those. And that was not anything that was discretionary for the public bodies that reviewed that. So that is the request. So with that, I'd be open to any questions that planning commission might have of staff. And then we do have the applicant present to speak on the matter.
Dean, would this be retroactive if we enacted this change? Would it be retroactive to the Bex addition?
It is possible that it would from the standpoint that in It is possible that it would from the standpoint that in most cases, when we're doing building permits, the construction of a sidewalk is the last thing you do, not the first thing you do, because you want to do that last when you're done with all the construction traffic and all that. So most of our developments, the public sidewalk has to be constructed before you get a certificate of occupancy. So even in a residential subdivision, when somebody is building a new home on a street, the last thing they do is construct the sidewalk. Because if you construct it first, it's just going to get driven over and beat up and have to be redone. So I can't answer that directly. That's, that's kind of a question for the city attorney when it gets to that point. But it is entirely possible that this could be retroactive in terms of the fact that sidewalk is generally the last improvement that is built as part of a building permit.
So, and I'm going to go back to the Bex example there. So we are, on Bex, we are deferring the curb and gutter, but we are requiring them to have a sidewalk there. Now, and is this on Ohio, or is this on that service road?
On Ohio. So I don't, Dustin, you've got some different graphics that we can pull up.
There's no other sidewalk out there.
That is correct.
So with this change, that would defer for the commission to...
It would allow an applicant to request that it be deferred. So the way that it's set up now is you could make a good argument that, notwithstanding that North Ohio doesn't have curb and gutter like streets in the interior of the city, it's a perfectly good road for traffic purposes and for, for driving without making improvement. So the idea was, and the idea was with, with Markley Road is it's, it's good enough for the traffic that it carries now, but in that case, we had lots of people living in the Magnolia Hills subdivision that felt trapped in the subdivision, because if you're wanting to walk or ride a bike, Markley Road is not the place to do it. So the hike bike path was put in there to provide connectivity out of that subdivision. But the road was left unchanged. So what the development agreement option does is it doesn't force the developers of Magnolia Hills Estates to put curb and gutter on Markley Road or make it a full standard street. And it didn't require Bex seeds to go out and put curb and gutter on Ohio Street or the ADR addition, which is across the street, or to have, as part of the Augustine addition, have South Ninth Street improved with curb and gutter in order to develop the property. And so the development agreement that was prepared, the, the criteria was that it can remain just as it is. And if, at some point in time, we have a traffic volume that reaches 7,500 vehicles a day, which may, or may not be ever triggered, then that would allow, it would, it requires the developer not to object to a formation of a benefit district that would then upgrade that section of roadway to full city street standards. So when we go out and build Magnolia Road, rebuild it, we're not going to do it in, we're not going to go out there and redo the whole thing and not put curb and gutter and those things on. It's, it's, the new section's going to have curb and gutter on it, but the remainder of it will not. The, the thing is that the, the agreement allows the improvements in terms of putting curb and gutter, storm sewer, things like that, in to replace the rural section and the roadside ditches. It does not allow the sidewalk to be deferred until that trigger point. And both, both the applicants believe it should.
Okay, I want, I want to hear from Mr. Mays in a minute, in a, in a minute, but...
So it's just a, it's just a policy question is, should sidewalks be required when development occurs, or should sidewalks be allowed to be deferred to some later point in time?
So 20 years from now, they, they upgrade it to a city street standard, that developer's responsible at that point to put the sidewalk in?
If we change it.
If we were to change it.
It, it would probably be put in as part of the street improvement.
So then they wouldn't have, the city then would pay for the sidewalk?
No, because the, the, what is set up is that it would probably be a benefit district created to pay for that unless it was done as a KDOT-type project like is happening on Magnolia. And in that case, the sidewalks would be built as part of the project, if it was a KDOT project, and nobody would pay. If it was done as a benefit district, then the cost of the curb and gutter and the sidewalk and all would be assessed to the abutting owner.
But then this is also just, if we went with recommendation two or three, we would just be kind of passing this on to give the City Commission the...
You, you are, you are making a recommendation, but the reason it's brought to you is that you are responsible for enforcing the subdivision regulations and you are a recommending body for any changes. But I guess the best, the best way to put it is that staff's and the City Commission's hands are tied in terms of granting a deferral. And so the policy question is, should we have subdivisions out there developing on Markley Roads, or South Ohio's, or West Magnolias that don't have full curb and gutter and wait till later to construct sidewalks? Until those improvements are done?
Well, I'm, I'm a big user of sidewalks and paths, but it seems kind of silly to me to put a small strip of sidewalk on North Ohio where Bex is, when you, and there's no curb and gutter there. There's a, there's a plenty wide bike lane on both sides. I, I would be in favor of this. I'd also like to hear maybe any other questions of staff?
Well, I just want to comment, I drive by there two, three times a day by the new Bex place. And, you know, this is a good example of why we need some flexibility to not require it. Because it's a piece of property that's outside, it's the counties, you have the city, then you have the county, then you have the city again, the annex for city. You know, nobody's ever going to use a sidewalk out there.
I, I agree, it's like a bridge to nowhere.
It's still a waste of time.
I would also like to hear from Mr. Stack if we could on, on this.
Yeah, the old sidewalk to nowhere question, that's a tough one. It's been challenging to put it, we do a lot of sidewalks and trails now, and sometimes it's, they're in areas where if we'd have put a sidewalk to nowhere in, we'd be connecting it now. So it's, it's a tough call. And you're exactly right, you know, how long would it take to get a sidewalk all the way out to Bex? That's a, that's a tough one. Whereas, you know, South Ninth, you know, that's an Augustine's storage out at Waterwell, you know, are we going to get one that far?
Well, this, if we, if we put it into a deferral mode, though, that would still give the possibility for...
Theoretically, it still gets built, yeah. That's true. That's the only thing that's hard from staff's perspective is the developer's gone, property owner's like, I'm not putting that in. So it just, it falls on the city taxpayer. So it's, it's, you're just deferring it to city taxpayer dollars, which we all, it's, it is what it is. It could be KDOT, could be federal, or could be city, but that's, that's who ends up typically paying for that kind of stuff. Unless you can get the actual building owner to put it, but this, that's not really what this is about, is it, Dean? This isn't a property owner.
Yeah, right.
When they build the building, they weren't...
Right now, the sidewalk construction is tied to the building permit, not to the street improvement.
This would relieve that if we went for the napkins.
What it would do is it wouldn't, what it, the request is to, to put language in the code that allows the City Commission to do it on a case-by-case basis, looking at where it's located and taking those factors into account. Today, there's no discretion there. It just says the minimum standard's an interim standard, the sidewalk's part of the interim standard, so there's no, there's no flexibility, there's no ability to look at a particular situation as being different from another.
Thank you, Dan.
Yeah, thank you.
I'd like to hear from Commissioner Farber if he's got a thought on this, or any questions for staff?
A lot of information in the packet, and I do appreciate the staff throwing that information out there to us. I think it makes sense for the non-residential side that we can defer this, and, and I agree, it does give some flexibility. As far as the residential side, probably is better to have sidewalk access and equal Mr. Stack was talking about, even if it's a sidewalk to nowhere at this point, eventually we are looking for connectivity at some point.
Thank you. Mr. Mays, would you like to give us the developer's perspective?
Jeff Mays, Compaire Realty 157 South Seventh. Thank you for leading me into that. One of the clarifications, I am not here on behalf of Bex. They didn't want to cause waves. And I appreciate your, your consideration, and it's certainly an appropriate example, just like Mr. Augustine's is. But I'm here as a developer and a taxpayer, and, and I'll tell you what led to this, is talking to staff and saying, guys, this makes no sense whatsoever. Can we apply some common sense? The answer was no. And to Dean's point, he said, you know, our hands are tied, as is yours, as is the City Commission's, relative to this sidewalk. Nobody's against sidewalks, but a sidewalk to nowhere is pretty dramatic and hard to sell, certainly to people that are coming from out of town and going, what do we have to do? And can you explain that to me? No, sorry, can't do that. I think one of the points that Mr. Stack made that I would refute, because we just got done negotiating and signing the development agreement for Bex, is that document is recorded against the property, and the city has full authority to go assess the property. If they have to put it in and the developer says no, they have authority, under the development agreement is written, and then we signed off on through the, what the city gave us as an example, to assess that property owner, be that Mr. Beck, Mr. Mays, Mr. Augustine, that gets assessed. So it does not, the taxpayer isn't, if you, if you choose to defer it, and the development agreement continues to be written and negotiated the way it is today, the taxpayer's not still on the hook. That property owner, no different through, than assessment in any other way you see it in the community, still applicable. So I'd like to make that clear. The, I mean, we, we can talk about, I, I got online, I looked, I mean, Mr. Augustine's property's 3,200 feet away from the next sidewalk, which is in front of the Riffle Edition, which doesn't have sidewalk to the north. The Bex is 6,100 feet away from a sidewalk that is at the intersection of Pacific and Ohio, that I got pictures of, I took pictures of that, that is overgrown. And, I mean, when a sidewalk just sits there and is not utilized, and so it's not trimmed, and it's not, and this happens to be on, this happens to be on city property where this particular sidewalk is from. So my, my preference would be, and we can handle this through, we can handle this with staff and with you all, or the City Commission, however that plays, through the development agreement. But it, to me, it makes most sense to say, yes, we'll defer the sidewalk, but the day that, that a sidewalk is abutting you, you have to tie to it. And that, that gets us around this idea of a sidewalk to nowhere. No one, myself, can explain that to the Bex, no problem. But to tell them, they've got to go out there 6,100 feet away from the nearest sidewalk that's overgrown, is a hard sell. And so we're asking to free staff's, staff's hands up and let them be able to make, you know, apply common sense and negotiate a development agreement that can, that can then come before you, and you can weigh in on that development agreement. I mean, but today, there's nothing that can, I mean, you can't help us, they can't help us, the City Commission can't help us. Mr. Augustine's, he got a, he gave me the bid, just for the concrete, for his sidewalk, $39,000, just over 39 grand. And he's 3,100, I mean, so it's not something, that may, that's a lot of money to me. And, I mean, it just makes no sense. So we'd ask you to consider our application in that regard.
Any questions of Mr. Mays?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have another question for staff with regards to the non-residential subdivisions. I mean, are there any situations where that would run into a sidewalk from nowhere? I mean, you don't see residential going out on North Ohio or...
Again, I mean, the, the term context and common sense is, is, keeps being used. And to Mr. Mays's point, that the way that the regulations are written now does not allow context or case-by-case analysis, it just says to be an interim street, sidewalk is an immediate improvement. The text amendment that's being asked for makes it discretionary. So if it looked to the City Commission like the need was immediate because of something abutting in the vicinity, then they would simply not allow that to be deferred. If it looked like a situation where it didn't make sense, then they could allow it to be deferred. But it's not, it's not taking away the sidewalk requirement, it's a question of timing. And one would hope that the decision-makers and staff is doing a good job to say, here is the context. The, the example would be, what you don't want to do is strand, and that's why we made the distinction between non-residential and residential, because residential, you have residents who often want to get somewhere else. And when we had Markley Road and that was platted originally, there was nothing out there. And we kept having meetings with those residents saying, we can't get out of our subdivision and go anywhere except by car, which was a fair statement. And then we had the plan to put the hike bike path in there. And then Mr. Daley platted the property directly north, and so we extended the hike bike path there, and we did that. And now you can get from the subdivision all the way up to the Berkeley Family Recreation Area. So that made sense. You could see where connecting pieces could come together. I would agree that it seems very unlikely that a sidewalk is going to get out from Pacific all the way out to the Bex property anytime in the foreseeable future, if ever. But the, hopefully, if the amendment is approved as requested, it just allows the City Commission to look at each case on a case-by-case basis, which they're not able to do now.
Go ahead. What's that? You want a motion? Well, I, I, Mr. Mays, I think, okay. And we need to hear anybody else in the audience care to address this?
We do not have anyone online.
We don't have anyone on. Commissioner Farber, any discussion from you?
I think it's been explained very well, both by Dean and by Mr. Mays as well. The, I guess the question that I have for you guys, are you leaning more towards the, I like the discretionary part, but are you looking more towards just non-residential, or is it something we need to open up to residential as well?
My thought is, under Mr. Andrews' explanation that he just gave, is that they would consider the residential, under, under number two, they would still consider residential and that'd still give them the, the option.
Number two is more flexible than limiting it only to non-residential. That was only just to point out that is part of your, your, your policy consideration that a, a subdivision that has homes and residences may have different perceptions and needs for a sidewalk than one that's in a non-residential area where you don't have residents, or you're not trying to connect residential neighborhoods. But as Commissioner Ivey pointed out, under... But as Commissioner Ivey pointed out, under option two, the city commission would still have, they only have the authority to defer, and if they chose not to exercise that authority to defer because they thought it was needed, because it was a residential situation, then they could just not include the deferral. Right now, deferral of a sidewalk is not an option, and Mr. Mays is requesting it be made an option available to the city commission. Jeff, can you give me an example of a residential area where a sidewalk would not be a sidewalk to nowhere, so to speak?
Not necessarily, but I don't do a lot of residential, so I'm probably not the right guy to ask the question to. The point that I was going to make, I think the code has some of it already in it, if you look at your 36-74, 3B, it says relevant factors for consideration to the public interest. Paragraph number two says the nature and the pace of development in the area of the proposed subdivision, the nature being the use, in my mind, and the pace of development, let's apply some reasonable expectations of how quickly it may not be a sidewalk to anywhere. So, I mean, again, I say, I think that you already have some of the language already in your code that, that calls for this type of thinking. That was what I was going to, you know, get up and point out, but I'm not certain that I could give you an example residentially. One of my questions, the way it's written right now, we have to put in a sidewalk, but what about the people across the street? Because it only requires one five-foot sidewalk, you know, and so who has to put it in? You know, the Salina Family or Salina Health Foundation, so it causes those kind of, as it's written today, and I think you're going down the path anyway, so I don't want to belabor the point, but as far as an example of non-resident, or residential, I wouldn't have that, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Well, I tend to agree, I, I think that, you know, by allowing a deferral, we are not saying that we, we're not in favor of sidewalks, we're just saying that this is something that we think the city commission should decide on a, on a case-by-case basis, and then assess a sidewalk at the time when it's appropriate. Because, you know, frankly, right now, the Beck's sidewalk seems ludicrous to me, but...
If there's going to be exceptions to the non-residential, there's going to be exceptions to a residential also, so we need to give them the flexibility to look at both of them, in my opinion.
I would agree. So, I guess, well, I didn't entertain a motion if anyone wants to do that.
I move we approve SR 23-1.
And with which option, number two, was that the, that's the one with, that is both residential and commercial?
Yes.
Second?
Moved and seconded to approve application SR 23-1 with the staff recommendation on number two, where that deferral is applicable to both commercial and residential properties. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Mr. Farber?
Aye.
Okay, and so opposed, record Mr. Farber, and I will go as a yea as well, so the motion passes four to one.
Thank you.
Administrative items. Administrative items, the last item we have for you this evening is a proposed replat out in the Liberty Edition, and the, we provided you with some background of this particular plat and development dates back to 2003, and it was actually done in, in pieces to allow the portion where Kennedy and Co. is located to be platted and developed first, and then the remaining 135 acres came into the city and was annexed and was platted. And if you're aware, there's a kind of a horseshoe street, Cortland Circle, that circles off of, of Schilling Road, but one of the signature pieces of this development, the way it was laid out and platted, is that there's a 120-foot wide drainage right-of-way that runs from south to north, and is a large drainage ditch that extends all the way south to Waterwell Road. And so we had an approved final plat in December of 2003 that had 19 commercial and industrial zone lots, and so the, the commercial lots were ringed along here, and the industrial lots here were to the south. And as we got into the design phase, we found a surveying bust or error, and we couldn't get the ditch to line up. So we ended up working with South Ohio Land to create a 45-degree bend in the ditch, which occurs right there where you see the street. And so you have the little bend there, and so there was a corrected plat that corrected that offset, and that was approved on October 4th, 2005, and so that is the current layout that we're working with, and city commission authorized the mayor to sign the corrected plat and accept the modified dedications. So now that, what you see on the screen is existing layout, and Mr. James Hall, on behalf of South Ohio Land, is requesting approval of a replat of that southern portion, and he's proposing to reconfigure and replat lots one and two blocks six in the southeast corner of the subdivision, and the plan is to shift Macintosh, which is currently at the north end, to the middle and create two lots, and have lots on either side of a realigned Macintosh. And then the street curve would be eliminated and converted to a, essentially a 90-degree intersection with Progress Drive and Macintosh. And so the basic design is unchanged, except the relocation of Macintosh Street allows for smaller lots and allows for lots to be located on both sides of Macintosh, and so access to the southern portion of the Liberty Edition is from South Ohio, not from Schilling. And so aside from the one requested curb cut, it's located right here, there, all the access will be from Macintosh Street, and the only real design change is the sweeping curve goes away and we have a 90-degree intersection. So the way this has been configured, all of the proposed lots can be developed without Progress Drive being constructed. And so if we're looking at the improvements needed to make this a developable area, we're talking about an extension of a 12-inch waterline, it's in Ohio, bringing it down here and looping it back to a 20-inch line here, construction of a public sewer along Macintosh to serve these lots, it would come back over to a sewer line there, constructing of Macintosh from Ohio to this intersection, and construction of a box culvert crossing the north-south drainage ditch. And one of the things that Mr. Mays referenced when he's talking about development agreements and things that are recorded, one of the things that Mr. Hall and I have had occasion to go back and look at is in 2004, there was an annexation agreement between South Ohio Land and the city of Salina that outlined all the terms and conditions of this property coming into the city, and one of the provisions of that agreement is that because they agreed to give all the right-of-way to the city at no cost for the drainage ditch, in exchange for that, the city agreed to pay for the cost of this box culvert. And so the fact that that annexation agreement was executed and runs with the land and is recorded, it doesn't matter whether the owners change, doesn't matter whether staff changes or different people, it's recorded in the deeds office and it runs with the land and it's available. One of the reasons for the annexation agreement is it's, it is recorded and it is reviewable so that in case people get older like me and forget that we agreed to pay for the box culvert, it's in writing. And so we can pull it out and agree that's what the city agreed to. And so that, that is the purpose of many of the agreements being recorded in the registry of deeds office, because when we say run with the land, it means you could have four different owners, but that agreement is binding on each succeeding owner. So that's, that's one of the reasons for, for doing that. So if we look at the vacations and dedications, this right-of-way and these easements here would go away and revert to this property, there's a notch over here from this curve that would revert back over to this property, there's a break in restricted access here, and we have a new utility easement being dedicated, and obviously, this right-of-way goes away, and this is new right-of-way. So those, those are all the dedications. And so we have kind of pre-planned this, had multiple meetings about what layout worked best, what infrastructure was needed, who was paying for what, and whose share was what, and we think this is ready for your consideration today. The only thing I would add, and I don't know if you have the GIS or what you have, Dustin, but if you could get a utility layout up there, just for the benefit of the commission, this was, in my experience, was probably one of the best master-planned utility, master utility planned area that we've had in the city, and it's a pretty innovative design from the standpoint that you have this ditch, and you have parallel sewer lines running next to the ditch on either side, so that you can access this way or this way without having to cross the ditch. There's this 20-inch waterline that runs the length of the property, and so there are not many places in Salina that are as well-suited to be readily served by public utilities and have sewer and water layouts and everything well, well-planned out for whatever would come here. So on page four, we've got three recommended conditions. One is that the developer would be responsible for design and construction of all public improvements shown on the preliminary plat and preliminary infrastructure plan drawings. That would be tying this line in Ohio back here to create that loop. It would be the construction of Macintosh Street, any internal public waterline or fire hydrants need to be in place and operational before we would issue any building permits. And then we have looked at this, there were a number of cost recovery fees that were set up as part of the annexation agreement, but the only part that is here is, would be paid, would be a cost recovery line for a previous waterline loop, and that's just based on the square footage of the area for which a building permit is issued. There's a drainage impact fee for Schilling Road ditch, that, this property's not subject to that, nor for a cost recovery for Schilling Road itself. So the only fee associated with this would be for a South Ohio waterline project. So with that, I'd be available for any questions you have about the existing or proposed layout, but I think if you look at it from an economic and feasibility standpoint, moving Macintosh Street so you can have lots on either side of the street that can share in the cost of constructing that street and have both sides benefit, is probably a better plan than what we had today.
I agree.
Questions of staff? Commissioner Farber, any questions of staff?
He's shaking his head no.
Okay. Would the applicant care to address this application, please?
Good afternoon, Commissioner James Hall, South Ohio Land. We've been, we've been doing this for 20 years. Dean and I started this, and here we are today. The more, more we look at this, moving this street to the middle, which we didn't have the vision to see when we did it originally, makes a lot more sense for what we're hearing or the needs are. So that's why we're here requesting this change, and we appreciate your help with it.
And you've seen the three conditions?
Yes.
And you're okay with those?
Yep.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Any questions of the applicant? I think we're okay. Anyone from the audience care to address this application?
We do not have anyone online right now.
Nobody online? Okay, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion and action.
I'll make the motion, we approve application PO 3-7C with the three conditions.
And a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor of approving application PO 3-7C with the three staff recommendations, say aye?
Aye.
Very good. And opposed? None being heard, motion carries. Preliminary discussion items are unfinished business. We don't have anything for you this evening in terms of unfinished or other business. Today is December 5th, we don't have any applications currently scheduled for the 19th, so we think that meeting is going to be canceled due to lack of agenda items. And we also don't have anything filed for Tuesday, January 2nd, which is the day after New Year's Day, so we don't think that meeting will be held, which would move us to January 16th, and we do think we'll have a number of items for that meeting, but we'll give you the rest of the year off with your usual pay, and you can enjoy your holidays. Well, I'd like to thank staff for this very thorough packet and for getting it out to us early, even though it was a ton of work, I'm sure, so thank you very much. I'd make a, or I'd take a motion for, oh, a public forum, excuse me. Anyone from the public care to talk about anything?
We have a... Nobody online.
We got the fire chief here, any questions for him, I mean? Gosh, I hate that we haven't called on him yet, but we enjoy our fire department very much, thank you for everything you do. Okay. Well, that being said, I'd take a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
And a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.